Call this meeting of Board of Supervisors Montgomery County, February 25th, 2019, to order. First business on hand be going to closed session. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby entering to closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Section 2.2, Day 3711, discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, performance, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, descrip-- what's that word?
Disponer.
Discipline, or resignation of officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, parks, or recreation commission. Is there a motion?
Second.
Madam Secretary, you can call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Schatzke?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Settles?
In closed session. Is there a motion to go out in closed session?
For move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Where is the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to a permanent recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act in, whereas, section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted and confirmed with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meetings requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion, if any, closed meetings were heard, discussed, considered by the Board. Madam Secretary, you can call roll, please.
I am not sure.
Need a motion, second?
For move.
Need a motion, second?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Schatzke?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Settles?
Now we'll go invocation and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Presentation, recognitions, and awards. Mr. Chair, first item this evening is a presentation from John Rife, I believe, with tax. He's going to update the Board on the collection of delinquent real estate taxes on behalf of the Treasurer's Office. Glad to have you with us this evening.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are with things and make sure I can just update the pod one presentation for you with current figures. So, we put some small numbers on the board with a nonjudicial sale, just to get an auction going, and those are small properties, so it's not plugging any kind of budget holes or anything along those lines. But we wanted to get those started now away, those that we could identify. From an overall collections perspective, we did get a new placement filed that increased the overall amount that we're collecting, and that overall amount pushed the referred amount up to $1.1 million that we were collecting. Of that amount, we've collected $207,000 to date, so that's a 19% collection rate on what's been turned over. But we're expecting, once we get into the actual sales and we start filing suits on more of these, that collection rate is just going to go up. We do anticipate, just give you an overall idea of the breakdown of the years before we get to where we're going with the tax sales. So, as I mentioned last time I was here, your 20-year-old balances are pretty low. Those that we have filed suit on may have one or two accounts that had 20 years of tax on it, so it's still showing 98 balance that's outstanding, and we're moving that through. We're going to preserve that so we can collect it. But it's as with any collection accounts, as you get newer in the years, it goes up. So, we're pursuing these, not just from high balance down, but also your oldest accounts to make sure we collect on those. We do have hearings scheduled on 10 properties that we're expecting to bring before the court on April 19th. This is for your judicial sales, and we expect to have a summer sale. We haven't yet set the date for the judicial sale, but we're also going to bring in some nonjudicial sales to hopefully beef that number of properties up to about 20 to 25 properties that we'll have at the auction. These auctions work better the more properties you have, but if you have, I've seen if you have 30 or more properties, you start to get buyer fatigue, people start running out of money, and it just doesn't do you any good. But we're moving them through. We've got five title searchers that we've engaged to help us with the titles. They haven't been coming in five as fast as I wanted, and we only had two, so we increased that number, trying to move through them as quick as we can. And we were also going to be issuing summonses on accounts. We've provided a list to the Treasurer's Office, and we've been coordinating with Ms. St. Clair's office and passing back contact information. Of that list, we have 40 of them that we're going to summons. We've contacted, we've had five payment plans set up from those, so we're throwing out as much as we can to try to get these accounts resolved. So, those summonses should be sent out next week, and we're going to be conducting those here on premises with individuals, and we usually have a lot of success with those. So, in addition, something I didn't update on this presentation, I know the Board had asked about personal property taxes, and Ms. St. Clair and I have been working through the file transfers, and we're hoping within 60 days that we'll be able to have personal property taxes that we're moving forward on. I think before any files are submitted or letters are generated, I do think that the Treasurer's Office is going to issue a press release, just so everyone knows that if they have a delinquent personal property tax bill, come in and get it taken care of before it gets sent to my office, and you can save some money. So, that rolled through it pretty quick. I know you all didn't want to take up too much time, but happy to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Any questions?
So, I saw you at the auction a month or so ago, and you mentioned that you used to work for Sands Anderson.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about what the difference is between your practice and their practice from what you recall?
Well, it's been a while since I was at Sands Anderson, but you know, while I was there, I was doing the real estate tax sales for them, and this has been, to tell you how long ago that was, it was back when their office was still in Radford. So, but one of the primary differences, and this is just from memory, and I'm not sure how they're doing it now, but it was a little bit more of a manual process, and they also had other practice areas that they were focusing on, whereas, you know, our sole focus is in representing governmental entities and collecting receivables and/or bankruptcy services. We throw a lot of resources at these, and we're representing approximately 65 governmental clients across the Commonwealth, so something seems to be working.
Also, before you get off of the podium, I just wanted to make sure, before Ms. St. Clair left, I verified before the meeting that the new savings rate that we have for the county is 2.1%, which should be about $350,000 of an additional revenue, in case anybody was interested. I think I quoted that correctly, Ms. St. Clair. Thank you. That's all I have.
And?
Wanted to say just one thing, excuse me. I do appreciate the comment that there'll be a press release issued in advance. I think that's really good for communication in order to allow citizens one extra attempt to get into the Treasurer's Office and resolve their taxes before it gets more expensive. So, thank you for your work, but I appreciate the attempted communication to eliminate the need for you on that end.
Absolutely. Our goal is to get the accounts resolved, and the more we can get collected ahead of time, it's the less work I've got to do on the back end.
Thank you.
You might have said it, and I might have missed it. You've collected 207,000 so far. Do you know just approximately how many properties that would be?
I did not print that statistic out, however, just looking at the numbers, we were referred 442 accounts. 388 show is still active, so my guess, it's probably around 50 to 60 properties. I don't think we've had any recalls on properties, so those should have been resolved accounts from various amounts that may be due on.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah, I have a point about Sands Anderson, and Carroll County was doing the tax sales, and they started about the exact same time. By November, they had a collection rate of about 25%, and you mentioned that maybe they were remaining. Is that a better way of going about those because their collection rate appears to be higher in that locale? I know every locale is different, but is that maybe a better way to go about things?
Well, Mr. Tuck, a lot of things goes into your collection rate. It depends on how new the debt is that's been turned over. It depends on a number of factors. I'm not sure why they just now started, because when I worked with Sands Anderson, they represented Carroll County. I don't know if it was a new referral that they sent over, but I think they've been working there for a little while, so I don't know if, I'm not sure I can speculate as to find those numbers. Yeah, but certainly happy to take a look at it and let you know. But a lot goes into the statistical collection rate and what allows for success. So, I don't know if they're collecting 17s or 18s, and if so, that certainly adds into the, those are a lot easier to collect than the ones that are from, you know, 2,000. Thank you.
Did that bring up any more questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for being here.
Mr. Chair, our next item on the agenda, we have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing is an ordinance changing the address for the D2 precinct Polling Place, and that is changing the address of the D2 precinct from the old Auburn High School located at 4163 Rhine Road, County of Montgomery, Virginia, to the new Auburn High School located at 1650 Auburn School Drive, County of Montgomery, Virginia.
I've seen a couple times, and we noticed in the ordinance that we had the old address and that the schools had changed the address for the high school when they renovated it, and so this is simply just a cleanup. Nothing's changed. The polling place hasn't changed. It's all in the, just in the address, and it's actually in the ordinance that you're changing, and you're required to have a public hearing in the ordinance, so it's a simple change, and we would ask after the public hearing that you, I think it's on the agenda, you consider that. It's a simple change. Nothing's changed in voting.
Not changing vote. No one signed up to speak at this public address. If anybody in the audience would like to come up and speak, walk, come up and state your name, address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this one. All right. Mr. Chair, the next public hearing we have this evening is a request by Shaw Development LLC, Agent Gay and No Incorporated, to rezonate a total of 155.73 acres from agricultural A1 to planned unit development residential district PUD-RES with proffered conditions to allow mixed residential development with up to 341 dwelling units. This property is located on the north side of Prices Fork Road. And Planning Director Gibson, I'll recognize you.
Thank you. Good evening. As Craig read, we're going to review the application that was submitted from A1 to PUD RES with proffered conditions. The subject property is located just west of Town of Blacksburg. It runs on Prices Fork Road, and it is in our Prices Fork Village area. This is just an aerial, and we have the subject properties here outlined in yellow. This was provided in your information packet, and it just shows the compilation of the properties. You can see here Sterling Manor, and here Phillips Acres, and under Prices Fork Road right there, the word is where Eminem Tire is located. This gives you a zoning overlay. The subject properties are shown, just shaded for your reference, but they are zoned to A1, as are the other white parcels shown here, the green, again Sterling Manor and Phillips Acres. So, I'm going to start talking through the analysis with the comprehensive plan. This is located, obviously, in our overall plan, but also in the Prices Fork Village Plan. So, this map is a compilation of the two. It has both the 2025 map as well as the Village map together, and the parcels, which are once again highlighted here, are shown as low-density residential. And some of you will remember, in 2015, there was a request for these specific parcels to be added into the Village Plan because they were in the Village Expansion area, and they were requested for the low-density residential designation at that time. And low-density residential in the Prices Fork Village Plan, just for clarification, low-density is one to two dwelling units an acre on private well and septic, and up to five dwelling units an acre if served by water and sewer. And that is the language that is in the comprehensive plan. Staff's analysis also identifies several supporting policy statements, so they're summarized here by a couple from the overall comp plan, and then several that are in the Village Plan. I'm going to look through those. The first part of the comp plan talks about whether properties qualify, and so we go through each of these seven criteria to look at the different aspects of the application to make sure that they meet the qualifications. One of the items identified there is related to housing. It speaks specifically to affordable housing, and though we are not discussing price points as part of the application, those were not part of the application, we do know there's a variety of housing types that will serve different levels, and that includes town homes, single-family detached, duplexes, as well as apartments. And everything except for the apartments are shown to be fee simple ownership with the apartments being rented. We touched on the housing types. It's there again with a variety of housing types identified, and then, as I mentioned earlier, this is within the density that the Village Plan talks about. It is also providing a significant amount of green space to serve the neighborhood, and that green space is a combination of usable space that you see on the concept plan. We'll touch on that in just a second, that is to be the type of pocket or neighborhood parks that are talked about, and then also, there's certainly an environmental element of areas that are environmentally sensitive that became part of the open space also. So, we'll move into impacts of the application and their review. One of the items that you see in your information is this table is represented by one of the proffers that was submitted. This table shows the proposed number of units, and so if you counted the number that are on the concept plan that you have, this is the number that you'd come up with. But as part of the proffers and the applicants hope to have some flexibility depending on different housing types and not having to walk into a specific number, they proffered a maximum allowable of each type, so that there was an assurance that if they asked for 341 units, they wouldn't all be single-family or all be apartments. This sort of gives you a breakdown, knowing there will be, it'll be a true mixed residential community. Then several of the other items that are listed here below also are represented as part of the proffers or part of the narrative package, and they are an attempt to address several of the impacts that were discussed throughout the application process. So duplex with a zero-foot setback in the middle means that those will be able to be on fee simple lots, and as I mentioned earlier, the multifamily units are identified to have no more than one unrelated person and a maximum of three bedrooms. The apartments are shown to meet some ADA accessibility standards, and if the proposed number of trips per day that came in with the traffic impact analysis are proposed to be exceeded in any way, a new traffic impact analysis would be required, and that's if they, if there ultimately was a decision to want to move forward with additional trips, that would require another rezoning and coming back before the Board. This is the concept plan that was provided in your packet, and this is as amended between both the Planning Commission's public hearing in January and their meeting that they held on the 13th. Some other impacts that are discussed in staff's analysis, first was aesthetics, so exterior lighting is addressed by the application. They eliminated street lighting, and it will be regulated lighting on the units or with the type of lighting that's discussed in the proffer, kind of a short pole light there for street and safety. Topography is another element of the aesthetics, so there's natural buffers in this area. Some items, some elements you won't be able to see from the road, some elements you won't be able to see from adjacent properties just due to the topographic nature of the site. And then the estate lots, the lots that are identified titled Estate Lots that are next to Sterling Manor have a minimum depth, and then accessory structures are prohibited unless they're at least 40 feet from the rear line. So, that's shown on the concept plan. You have to sort of zoom in a little bit to see those. Other infrastructure impacts, this will be served by public water and sewer, and that will be extended to the site at the cost of the applicant. It will require a pump station to be constructed, and they've already been working with some adjacent properties to obtain the easements needed for that service. Emergency services did express some concerns. We've had some conversations particularly about the emergency access to Brooksfield Road, and there was a discussion related to hydrants. They're required on all of our subdivisions, but that was one of our discussion points with impacts. The environment, our stormwater management, this triggers what we call common plan development. That will be required, and then there has already been a preliminary delineation in place. There are three proposed crossings. Those cannot, the stream of that line areas can't be used as water quality credits, and DEQ's already provided a cursory review there. We did receive comments from the schools on this project, all the schools, this is served by the Blacksburg Strand. All of the schools that would be served are under capacity and could serve the development. Accommodations for school buses were talked about in some detail with the schools, both maneuvering within the site, because you'll notice that the road network does have several cul-de-sac streets. The applicant has proffered to use bus shelters at various locations, and those aren't currently identified, because typically, if an application, it goes through and is approved during the site plan process. Staff and the applicant work with the schools to pose the best locations for those. So, those are proffered, but not specifically identified on the concept plan. One of the items that the school also commented on was safe and expeditious travel in and out of the property regardless of direction. So, we talked a little bit about the timing, if you're making a right from the project to go immediately left into Prices Fork Elementary School, but another item we spoke with the schools about was if you are in there in the morning with the bus and you need to make a left to go back to the Middle or High School, and that, we will cover that a little bit more detail in the level of service conversation. So, that brings us right into analysis. Staff's analysis showed that the concept plan meets several goals. We talked about the different housing types and the appropriate density, also onsite recreation opportunities and open space for the project. The density that is proffered is 2.185 units, and as I mentioned earlier, our Village Plan with public water and sewer does speak to up to five units an acre because our villages are growth areas. The amount of open space does exceed the minimum requirement for the PUD RES, that's 20%. The, I think I've already touched on, the proffers do address several different amenities for the open space there, and the proffer about limiting occupants and bedrooms that we also covered is intended to deter student housing. In one of the public hearings with the Commission, there was a discussion about concerns related to student housing with this project. When we talk about transportation in this area, all of us know that Prices Fork is a main commuter route in the county. Not only does it serve commuters that are coming from Radford and Fairlon, but it serves our local commuting traffic, and that's McCoy, Long Shop, Mount Zion, Big Falls, Lake Forest, so all of our local traffic is also coming through this portion, and this area sees in excess of 10,000 vehicles per day. The application shows a single-stop controlled entrance at Prices Fork and does show that emergency access. Brooksfield Road could not serve as a full functioning access point, but it was an attempt, since the applicant owns a fee simple strip to Brooksfield, to be able to have sort of a relief out there, if you want to look at it that way. There are right and left turn lanes on Prices Fork into the project, and then the project also has right and left turn lanes exiting the project. So, there is an entrance diagram that was provided in your packet, and you can get a sense of what that looks like, sort of lead over some of our aerial photography there. One of the items that we talked about in the staff analysis was if you look forward into Build Out, which is several years down the road, the traffic analysis did show an increase in wait times at peak hour for Prices Fork Elementary School. That's about five seconds there. But one of the items that was a change between the Commission's hearing and their ultimate recommendation for you all was a connection to an undeveloped adjacent parcel that will actually be constructed, so we call those stub streets usually. This project's a little bit unique because you see that part of the road network to an undeveloped parcel that ultimately would take you over to Walnut Springs, and then you also see some future connections that are shown that would be dedicated over to the county, and those are more for bike and ped, potentially vehicular in some manner, but one of them does go to the Conservation East Mid Area for the Hoag Farm, and that would be more for a trail, a bike-ped type of amenity, not an actual road construction there. I did note that if the connection did go through to the undeveloped parcel, whether there was an entrance added to Walnut Springs or that traffic used this, more analysis would be required to analyze how that movement would be at either one of those entrances. The roads are going to be mostly public. There's a streets diagram that was provided in your packet, and we'll meet the, we call it SSAR, but that's the VDOT language for subdivision street acceptance requirements. There is one known exception needed, and that's tied to pedestrian accommodations. So, that has been vetted by VDOT that ultimately the street network would be able to come into the system. Another item that was provided in the staff analysis, we gave you a traffic impact analysis, and we gave you, it has a lot of numbers and letters in it. We provided some counts and then used the build-out conditions from the Prices Fork Elementary Traffic Impact Analysis from several years ago. It had a 2018 build-out condition, and they're pretty much, they're getting close to that in the next year, so that was a pretty close estimate. The numbers you see there are actual vehicle counts, 2017 numbers from VDOT for roads that are nearby, and then that traffic impact analysis projected some of the levels of service, and it gives you a sense of what that delay is projected to be basically at today or close to with build-out of the school. And then Merrimack Road, we just put a vehicles per day. Again, it was within a mile of the project, and we wanted to give you a sense of what those numbers look like, because we don't spend a lot of time looking at traffic impact analysis. We probably do more than you guys, and still it can seem a little abstract. So, those were just for you to have some numbers of nearby roads. Another item in the transportation realm that staff spent some time addressing was the county's needs to address. the county's needs to address, steps to address transportation needs. I'm in front of you guys very often talking about transportation needs that we have throughout the county, asking you to prioritize those. A lot of times we do that based on volume and this is a high volume road. And so an example is the commitment that the board made, actually before I started with the county for the Prices Fork Turn Lane project that we're just now constructing. That project is over $2 million in improvements to add to three turn lanes, hopefully to improve safety and already improving visibility in the area. But that's just an example of one projects and project and we have them on a lot of our major roads. So Prices Fork 114, Route 8, those are roads I'm here talking to you about a lot. And so staff wanted to address that the board has these existing needs and they are tied to existing zoning and existing travel patterns in the site plans that we're getting and based on by right zoning. And rezoning requests are determined through legislative process intentionally. And that is so we can evaluate the impacts, just as staff's brought them forward today. And staff did have concerns remaining about the impacts to the entrance for this project. Ultimately, we went into, like I mentioned, two meetings with the planning commission. We had 15 speakers at their hearing in January and then nine speakers came to the public address part of the February 13th meeting with the commission. And I did provide copies of the correspondence that staff and the commission received up to that point so that you had a sense of what information was also provided in writing. The commission made a recommendation to the board for approval and that's with the proffered conditions that were included. I'm not going to read them to you, but there were several, some were original such as the layout and the density and even the dwelling types that came in at the hearing stage. But there were changes that were made in some of the later proffers. And those are related to the green space added, an additional area that's shown as the dog park. The lighting was an additional proffer that was received during that time. The interparcel connections were clarified. So those areas that are identified to be dedicated to the county but not for an immediate road connection, as well as the area that is going to be a stub street. And we touched on the accessibility, occupancy requirements and bedrooms. Ultimately, this slide is from the other item that we have later today, so it has the wrong title, but it is the correct vote. The commission did vote unanimously with that recommendation for the board to approve. That stands as staff's presentation. The applicant also has a presentation that I'll queue up for you, but I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Steve, by having any questions?
I do. So it was, I attended the January planning commission meeting. And during that meeting, it said that there were about 12,000 trips a day in Reiner at a similar, it's not an intersection, right? Well, I guess it is an intersection with the turning lanes. And this is 10,000, but it will increase to 20, another 2,700?
2,700 is the number from their study.
Okay. And so is there anything to make us think that it's going to be any, you know, it'll be slightly worse because it's 700 more than what Reiner has already, but is it really that big of a deal?
So staff didn't actually provide that analysis. That was provided by a citizen who came forward and did a comparison related to Route 8. Or was it the applicant? I can't remember.
I think it was the applicant.
Yeah. So that was a comparison to a portion of Route 8. Staff didn't further analyze the comparison. We, we stayed local with our analysis. But the, I guess the thing to think about is that Route 8 portion and talking about current counts there, these 2,700 trips are proposed to be added at a buildout of approximately 15 years. So during that time, both regular travel on both roads is going to expand. So it's not really a like to like, we wouldn't really be able to do a
I see.
Like to like comparison there.
Is a five second or a four second increase in waiting time a big deal?
So the breakdown in level of services done by seconds. And at peak time on the Prices Fork corridor, there are points such as the interest of the elementary school, which was one of the items that we brought up in staff report that shows an increase in wait time. But then there's the points coming in and leaving the project that have level of service extenuating wait times also. Those are, it's a, it's a scoring mechanism that we call level of service. This is our level of service E during those times, A being the best. So that gives you a sense of where that falls. But it's all a matter of seconds, so those five seconds could put you into a higher or lower classification. It's kind of relative, which is why we gave you those counts and delays that are currently being experienced on nearby roads. So if you're not a traffic engineer, it's hard to grasp it.
So it's really 15% increase is really probably better? Well, I mean, I don't know about better or worse, but I'm understanding what you're saying.
The other thing to think about with the Prices Fork Elementary School time is again, we use that buildout addition. And that will be several years out. So in the meantime, Prices Fork could potentially already be even more seconds delayed. So it's hard to, again, line them up exactly.
So in your presentation, it also had up to five dwelling units per acre. How does that fit with the fact that there are going to be apartment buildings there? That's why we're rezoning it. I get, I get that. But overall, when you do a village planning, it's really, you know, the whole area, you know, and clearly it's well below five dwelling units per acre. That's, that's how you as a planner work with our community and us to design the next generation of our village plan, regardless of how it's sliced and diced with different zoning within that parcel like this. Do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I think I do. So there's been several different comments that came before the, the commission and staff related to if it's a, a multifamily particularly type of use. We don't view that as low density. But, you know, from staff's perspective and the county code perspective and the village perspective and even the state code perspective, we look at density as a units per acre calculation. And in this case, this is the, the density, it's gross density. And so that, that's basically what it boils down to. I think that comment is more tied to aesthetics than to density if you're looking at it in the true sense of the word because it's really a calculation. And I think that's understandable. So it's not a housing type that you see currently in the village. And you have to weigh that between the need and desire for multiple types of housing and the need, the desire for density, but also a rural feel with preserved open space. So there's a lot that goes into staff's analysis and probably the applicant's in putting that together to include a use such as multifamily apartments. They did provide a picture of what they proposed those to look like so that, because I think a lot of times we hear apartments, we go to sort of worst case scenario, the graphic isn't proffered, but it does give you a sense of the type of units that they are considering.
You mentioned a little bit about public water and sewer. From what I can recall, the developers are paying three or 400, you know, or splitting the cost of the water sewer to get there, which costs about three or $400,000 or am I way off of that calculation?
I don't know those numbers, but they can speak to them when they come up.
So like you mentioned just a moment ago, that the appearance of the units are not proffered? And that's for all of the units within the development, correct?
That's correct, yes.
None of it is proffered at all?
No, nothing tied to the aesthetics.
Okay. Also at the planning committee, commission meeting, a couple of people mentioned deer, wildlife impacts. Do we have anything to say about, does the planning department do any analysis about that?
We do not.
Is there any minimum number of bus shelters that are proffered or, and/or general location for them yet?
So there is a size of the five to 10. And it just says various location within the network, specific location, style and size to be determined in conjunction with the plan and coordinated with the schools. So what typically happens there is the school does an analysis of how the bus will, you know, go through the neighborhood and then where they would most like to stop. And that's usually just worked out during that time. But we don't have a number or the exact style or location right now.
And it's not required and they're, they are or are not proffering bus shelters?
It is not required. That, that proffer is above a minimum requirement, yes.
And then lastly, the turn lanes that are being proposed, do we have any idea what the North Star Church is planning on doing for their entrance exit and how that might be impacted by, you know, we'd hate to have to tear it up, you know, change it a little bit just because that church is going to come out at a different place, you know what I mean?
The church's entrance will come out at a different place. It would be basically, it would be off the screen here. The house that was just demolished is the approximate location. That church is a by right use, so it won't come through the same process in front of you. However, it will have to do a site plan. And right now, they are working towards doing some grading there, but they do not have an approved site plan. They actually haven't submitted a site plan. So we're sort of tracking them together, knowing that ultimately the church entrance, because it is by right, could be in place before the end of this year versus this project needing to, much more work to get to that place. So we're tracking them, VDOT's aware of them. We've had some conversations. You cannot see on this, well, you can see a little on this graphic. This is actually the taper for the left into the Prices Fork Elementary School. So you can see how kind of close we are here to turning into Prices Fork Elementary. And that's their taper coming into their left here. And this is the left here. It's probably going to be a similar scenario here. You're going to have them sort of being very close together. But ultimately reviewed by VDOT to ensure that, that the safety standards and standard taper and storage links are met.
Thank you.
Want to ask your professional opinion about another? It's, it kind of relates to this, but not really either. Are there any studies or are you aware of any studies or analysis that's been done about whether speed limit affects like that wait time, good or bad?
So the way the analysis is done, and a transportation engineer can speak to this a little bit better, but the way the analysis is done, so you have a posted speed limit, but then they also look at what the behavior is there and then they also do a range with it. So in this particular area, this area is posted as 35, but I think they analyzed it more like around 45, just looking at driver behavior and the range that they're allowed to use. So that does play into it. It's certainly different than if it was posted at 55 because things that are posted at 55 are typically analyzed more like at 60 or 65 based on driver behavior and where they are. So that does come into play. The applicant engineer may be able to speak to that a little bit more on their particular project.
The reason I ask is because I know there's been some concern about people in Sterling Manor and other developments on that road about wait times that they already have. And that speed limit is 45 we're there at. I just wonder if dropping that wouldn't assist that or help that because it's less than a mile from the 35 to the 40.
Oh, right. Yeah, the, the posting for the 35 is, is definitely, it's sort of in this area, I think. Sterling Manor is just on the other side. There is definitely something to look at. I mean, we know driver behavior. You leave the town and you know you can go faster. You're not quite sure how fast. Oh, and then you're just getting up to speed and then you're kind of flying into the historic part of the village. So I, I think that, you know, that could be, that could be an element that could be looked at in the future to have maybe one consistent speed limit versus leaving the town, coming out of town, going back into the village. It does impact wait time, certainly.
That's all I have.
Could you bring up the table that was early in your presentation? It was titled, "The Preserve of Walnut Springs Impacts," I think. Yes, that one. So with the apartments, and I'm just assuming a three-story, 12-unit building, it looks like we're looking at a difference between seven proposed buildings and nine would be the maximum allowed. And then the townhouses and duplexes are fairly close. I'm concerned about the difference in the proposal for the single family at 109 with a maximum allowed of 268. And I'm interpreting that the project is 341 total. So is there anything that would prevent them from building 268 houses and then an additional, I can't, 73 units of another type? I'm concerned about making sure that if we're going to have a true mixed-use development, that it truly is mixed use. And I think I've soapboxed about this before. Not all student housing is bad. There's grad students that come with their families that need access to housing and would really appreciate the opportunity to be in a community like this. So is there anything to protect us, should we approve it, from having a really single-family home heavy development with a little bit of housing mix thrown in?
The proffer with the maximum, those numbers that you see in the form right column, that is meant, that is our only protection, that those maxims could be maximized and up to that. However, in doing so, one of the things that's also important to remember as part of the proffers is that the number of trips per day, the 2,701, a single-family detached has a higher trip volume than some of those other uses. And so whatever it would be, it would not be able to exceed that number of trips per day. So if they were leaning towards mostly single-family detached and, and one, one other type, that more than likely could trigger them into needing to come back for review because at no point could they exceed that maximum number of trips from the current TIA. Other than that, there's no other mechanism other than these maxims to, to get at addressing you. So what you just proposed could happen.
So these are voluntary proffers. Is it possible to discuss with the developers scaling back the maximum single-family allowed? Is that something that?
I'll let Marty speak specifically, but if you have a concern related to a true mix, I think that is a valid statement to make. We don't speak specifically to proffers.
I understand. Marty, did you have any input on that?
I think she, I think she stated that very well.
So I just stay away from that one? Okay, great. And then to the traffic impact analysis, or I guess the level of service analysis, if we're at a level of service of E with A being the best, is there a worst level of service grade that is assigned?
You can go to a level of service F, yes.
Okay.
And the staff analysis tries to address that that's not a all-day, all-the-time level service E. It's just during those peak times, which have, we brought up because it's most impactful to the proposed community and the current commuting public.
What's the level of service at a non-peak time where it would be a more typical like 3 o'clock in the afternoon? I guess that would be peak time on a regular Sunday school. 10:30 in the morning, would it be a reasonable level of service at that point?
It does, it does increase. It's no longer an E. I don't remember what the analysis spoke to specifically, but it's, it's part of one of their tables in there. The applicant may also be able to speak to that specifically if you wanted to talk about off-peak function.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I was calling in for Sarah. Remember, Sarah back was out at that point in time. She was unable to attend the planning commission meeting. I was able to listen to the planning commissioners discuss and how they came to that not easy or nothing decision. Part of it, Mr. Katz does, is a traffic engineer. And he initially, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, was probably going to be a no vote. But one of the things that Mr. Rice, who's a real estate developer, said there is a demand for housing in the county of Rock Hill. And that in some ways, you've got to remember that this is the buildout is where we are at, at the E. Once it reaches the buildout, that may not be a five or 10 or 15, as long as 15 years out before it reaches that buildout. I believe that that discussion between Mr. Rice and Mr. Katz persuaded Mr. Rice to change his vote. And again, this is to a yes. Also, Mr. Foster was along those same lines. His background is financial. His background is financial, but he had some concerns and was worried. I heard him say some discussion about, is E good enough? Is this, is the minimum good enough? But also, he has some life experience of being, I think he lives off of Merrimack and makes that right-hand turn and left-hand turn out. And so he's got that experience that he was bringing to the table. I believe, again, some of the conversations about that VDOT and maybe even this board may have to address some of the issues on Prices Fork Road in the coming years to try to address the increase in traffic. There was also some discussions about the building. And if it's not here, you're going to see growth in Radford or in Pulaski, and those folks are still going to be taking Prices Fork Road. But they're going to be commuting rather than, or they're going to be living in Wake Forest, or they're going to be living in McCoy, and we're going to see some of our farmlands taken up at that point in time. So that was some of the discussion. It was very good, back and forth, and a good debate. And I also want to say with the staff, there was a lot of compliments by our staff from the planning commission, because they went through analysis, and it was really, from my perspective, from the planning commission, it was the traffic that was holding it back. There was a couple of different commissioners said the developers had checked every single box that we were hoping that they would check, except for this road issue. So that's how I would report that back. There were, obviously, there were speakers speaking out with some concerns from Sterling Manor primarily, discussing about their concerns about different setbacks and the like, and that was, and then, but traffic was still a primary concern. If I missed anything, Emily will...
I'd just clarify, Mr. Foster doesn't live off of Merrimack, but he has some family that does.
Oh, family. Thank you. Supervisor, Mo?
In fact, he lives in my district, I think. Supervisor Tuck just mentioned something about VDOT may need to improve Prices Fork over time, short, you know, in the next 10 or 15 years. Why would they choose to, would they choose to do this versus do the same improvement in Reiner in 10 or 15 years? Because that's already got more traffic. Or I'm not quite sure exactly what you mean when you made that kind of statement, so that I could get some clarification from Ms. Gibson.
And I guess since I've made this, I guess, I'm interpreting what some of the other commissioners were saying, which was, you know, VDOT will have to address it. Reiner wasn't in front of them, but that was my impression that this is things that VDOT will have to take care of, that you're not going to see, VDOT's not going to build it up, and then development's going to come. It's going to be development, and you're going to have people complaining about commute, and then you're going to have VDOT make the changes. And whether it's the bypass that, you know, or parkway that's proposed, running off of South Gate and going all the way out to Prices Fork near where the recycling center is, or expansion or widening, I think that was what they were debating. And again, correct me if, but Reiner wasn't in front of us so much on that second meeting.
I think the larger discussion was about that there's going to be a need to look at traffic needs and partner. I don't think I heard anyone say that VDOT was going to need to make some improvements, because VDOT's not going to proactively and sometimes even reactively make improvements. More often, as I mentioned earlier, I'm in front of you talking about us having to deal with our own road issues here in Montgomery County. And more and more, though they've created other funding mechanisms, so far, we have not benefited from them. And so I don't think, if I would have heard the commission say that, I probably would have interjected. VDOT is not going to be jumping in and working on road issues. There is definitely an opportunity to partner, to take advantage of some of the application types that are there. But I think that was kind of where the conversation sort of went, that there is a known issue coming, that we do have a work employment hub in the town of Blacksburg, and that there should be a larger discussion about how we can share on some of the needs, particularly transportation was one.
Thank you.
I'd like to just make a brief comment, I guess. With Main Street and Prices Fork being the only two arterial roads in the town of Blacksburg, am I right about that, that they're the only two?
I'm not familiar with the town of Blacksburg's street network.
I'm pretty sure that those are the only two arterial roads through the town of Blacksburg. I know that the town looks a lot at Prices Fork. I know that we look a lot at Prices Fork. But we also have to balance, I guess, the needs of the motoring public with how are we going to house people in our communities in the places that they want to live? And so this is an interesting proposal that causes us to have to do exactly that.
Any more questions?
I just want to make one comment. I know from driving a school bus on that road every day, that's my route, those wait times that you were talking about coming out of McCoy Road, there's a lot of traffic comes out of Radford on that road.
Yeah.
An immense amount. So anyway, that bypass would surely help then.
Okay, and I brought up the applicants' presentation, and they would like to say a few things to you also.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate your office time this evening. My name is John Neal. I'm an engineer with Gay and Neal. I have with me tonight Michael Gay, Tom Rutledge, and David Hagan from Shawdell. Get into this and show you a little bit about the new neighborhood that we want to bring to Montgomery County, the Preserve of Walnut Springs. Want to fly out to 30,000 feet for just a second, because we're talking about 150 acres. But one thing to keep in mind, the Hope property was originally about 426 acres, I think probably a little bit more than that, a long time ago. But more recently, it's 426 acres, and it's kind of outlined here on your screen. Prices Fork Road is over here on the right, and then Glade Road is all the way over here on the left. So the Hope property spanned all the way from, excuse me, Prices Fork Road all the way over to Glade Road, 426 acres. The Hope family in their, and that was the Hope farm, and kind of in their wisdom, they set aside 270 acres of that in a conservation easement several years ago, trying to maintain the farm, the farmhouse, and kind of the proper area of farms over here on the left-hand side, where they set aside that conservation easement, trying to plan for the future. And part of that plan for the future was setting aside the other 155 acres for something in the future. And that went along with that 2015 plan that set this as low-density residential and made it, brought it into a part of the Prices Fork Village. So just to kind of give some perspective, at 30,000 feet on the overall plan, it's kind of been in process for quite a while now. And as Emily mentioned, this was moved into the Prices Fork Village, low-density residential, and not the, in the village plan was four units per acre. Emily mentioned five units per acre. The Preserve of Walnut Springs is only proposing 2.18 units per acre over that entire 150 acres. So we're well below that threshold of, I think Emily mentioned, said the villages are where you are planning for your growth. And we've tried to come up with a pretty good plan for that growth on this property. Mentioned the public utilities, that was one of the other kind of factors that factored into planning for that growth. We are partnering with North Star Church, even though they're still kind of working on their overall site plan and those types of things. We have worked with them to extend the public sewer up from Sandy Circle up to Prices Fork Road, and then back on across Prices Fork Road and down into our development with a sanitary sewer pump station, trying to invest in the overall long-term sewer service for the entire area, the entire sewer shed, which would include Sterling Manor. They are, right now, using alternative onsite septic systems. And at some point in the future, it might be two years, it might be 20 years, it might be 50 years, onsite septic systems, they can have problems. And you kind of, that's one of the reasons you have reserve areas and those types of things. So we've kind of allowing them in that big picture of the sewer shed. 12-inch water line along Prices Fork Road, somebody was thinking about, thinking ahead back in the day, putting that water line along Prices Fork Road. And we do have an availability letter from Montgomery County PSA for all the utilities for the building. I think Mr. Tuck mentioned, I think Mr. Rice mentioned as well at the planning commission, 1901 group, if you're familiar with them, they recently announced they're going to add 580 new jobs in the CRC. Torque Robotics announced 55 new jobs. In the Rhode Times on February 7th, there was an article titled "Amazon's Impact: Hundreds of New Jobs, Higher Enrollment at Virginia Tech's Blacksburg Campus." And excerpted just a few of the little items from that article, but one of the things that I point to and think about is, over the next five-day years, Tech plans to grow its undergraduate enrollment in computer science and related fields by 2000, as well as add 130 more faculty jobs. And that's just in the computer science department moving along. The people are coming, and we want to plan and put them in the best place for them to go. And Virginia Tech is that big anchor that is bringing those jobs. And trying to place them as close as we can to the source of that job is probably good There's, Ms. Mo, you asked a question about the example, and what we wanted to get across with that Auburn Hills entrance out on Route 8 is to give people an idea what it would look like physically. So you could go out there, drive out there and look and see what that left-turn lane in and that right-turn lane in looked like, as far as what the intersection would physically look like. But Route 8 does have 12,000 vehicles per day, so it has a similar amount of traffic on the road. Auburn Hills does not have, at our full build-out, it doesn't have the amount of traffic coming out of there. But, but the overall makeup and geometry of the entrance would be very similar. We do have an emergency access out on Brooksfield Road. Thomas Lane, that's one of the other intersections down in Prices Fork. It's only 18 feet wide. We're going to have a full 36-foot-wide entrance coming out on the Prices Fork Road, and the vertical geometry of our road is going to be substantially better than Thomas Lane. Right now, it comes down on the Prices Fork Road. So in the winter, and we have people maybe sliding out in Prices Fork Road, we won't have that situation at all. It doesn't have any turn lanes exiting on the Prices Fork Road. There's no emergency exit out or into the Thomas Lane area. And right now, currently, there's no future opportunity for any connectivity. So talking about that connectivity, one of the things that we've tried to do with this neighborhood is plan several opportunities in the future for connection, because we do have, I think somebody mentioned that planning commission, we only have about 100-foot-wide strip where we're connected to any public street other than our 40-feet at Brooksfield, which is not wide enough for any road other than our emergency service connection. We do have and are providing our cul-de-sac right here, connection over to Virginia Tech's property, so that if something did happen with that in the future, I don't anticipate it will, but if something did happen, we could connect over to there, as well as a little small piece, some of these parcels here. But more importantly, and I think more accurately, is we have a potential connection here and a potential connection over to the conservation area on the Hope property. And I think very long-term about that, that we may have pedestrian or bikeway getting over to Glade Road, or if something happened, you might be able to get an actual road connection over to Glade Road at some point in the future. And then we also have the stud that we're talking about that will be right here, going over this parcel that connects over Walnut Springs Road. One of the things that we're pretty excited about with this neighborhood is all the trails and recreation opportunity that we'll have as part of the overall community. The planned unit development zoning district requires 20% open space. We're providing 35% open space, and that's 23 additional acres on top of what's required. So our total open space is 55 acres. We have two large recreation areas connected by 2.7 miles of sidewalk and trails throughout the community. And then, last but not least, we added this a little late, but I'm happy about it, is we've got a one-and-a-half-acre dog park down internal to the development, so everybody will be able to take their dogs there. We think it's a great addition to the community. So I'll take you very briefly, and I don't want to belabor this, kind of take you through our diverse neighborhood. First, we have, and I'll work you from the larger lots all the way down to the smaller lots. One of the things that I know that I've done over the course of living in the New River Valley, is I started in, I started actually in an apartment, then went to a townhouse, then I went to a single-family house, and now I'm in, and actually, then I went back to a townhouse for a little bit. And then I went to a larger single-family house. And that has all taken place probably in less than a three-quarter of a square mile, because we liked the area. When we moved into that apartment, we really liked the area we were in. And so when we looked for the next phase of life in our housing, we stayed in that area. And we think that this neighborhood, this community, will allow people to do that. When they start to plant roots in the New River Valley, they will be able to do that within this one community as they move up in housing. And then eventually, at some point, when they want to downsize, they can move back down the ladder as well. So single-family detached estate lots, these are kind of our larger lots, they're kind of over near Sterling Manor and Walnut Springs side. Then we have, there's lots that have some extra restrictions on them that are specifically updating the Sterling Manor neighborhood. We've got a few additional restrictions. That's where you can see the red on your concept plan. Then we have more of the single-family detached dwelling uses, smaller single-family-sized houses, a little bit more starter homes. And then we have single-family detached, as well as a mixture of duplexes, inter-meat. And one of the things that we used as an inspiration for the whole neighborhood was the Village of Tom's Creek, which is in Blacksburg. Excuse me. I had the opportunity to work on that project 20 years ago, and it's just now finishing up. So the concept of a 15-year build-out is pretty accurate, actually. I did some of the first engineering work I did on that project. One of the neat things about it, if you come into the Village of Tom's Creek, we designed houses to have kind of a shared front yard. And the idea was that you'd have families with kids there, and they'd all be able to play in the front yard, and mom or dad could see them from the front window or the kitchen window or whatever, and keep an eye on them, but foster a sense of community. We've done that same kind of design here in two of our little areas that are duplex and single-family detached areas, only we've made it the backyards. And so we really think that provides an opportunity for people to get together and the kids in the neighborhood to play together, and actually probably be a little bit more safe in that there's no street in front of them. So you can maybe let them go a little bit more wild in the backyard than you can in the front yard. We do have a section of townhouses, and this is some of the, and the pictures I'm showing here, this is from the Village of Tom's Creek this is. And so this is a townhouse project. This is a triplex, but that is not the entirety of that unit. It's actually over here. So what you see is it's pretty neat architecturally and allows for it to look a little bit more unique and interesting. But it's, this is a triplex, so this is one unit, here's another, and then there's another. So we have a townhouse section. And then, last but not least, we've buffered this from all the adjoining properties. We've pushed it into the back of the neighborhood, which is one of the things that's actually kind of mentioned in the village plan, is pushing the density away from the rural character of Prices Fork Road. And we've had a maximum of seven buildings, 84 units, but we also have that proffer allowing up to 108. And this is an example of the type of style of apartment building we'd be looking at. So that, I run through that relatively quickly, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Michael and Tom and David are here as well, and appreciate your time.
Do you have any questions? Could you, on Emily's presentation, she, there was a section in there where she talked about the apartments and no more than one unrelated person. Can you talk, speak to that just a little bit?
Sure. And I'll actually ask Michael to come up, if that's okay. But yeah, that's one of the things, I think there was a concern about student housing. One of the things with our apartments is we have no more than three-bedroom units. So there's no like four- and five-bedroom units where you typically would see students kind of collecting together and renting. But we also have no more, a total of two unrelated individuals. So you could have... So you could have a mom and a dad and also have a roommate. So just two unrelated individuals maximum. Is that the proper way to explain that one?
I think you just did. Actually, we did run this, being a proffer, we got it in more, I want to say legalese or more in line with state code. And it says, "The townhouses and apartment dwellings will be limited in occupancy to one or more persons related by blood, marriage, adoption, or guardianship, plus one unrelated person."
Okay.
That meets the code.
So you're not going to have three buddies renting a three-bedroom apartment?
Less than brothers. Less than brothers.
Right, right.
Cousins.
Two back, Mom?
So several times throughout your presentation and at the Planning Commission, you use examples of Village at Tom's Creek, but there's certain, I just want to understand, there are no proffers saying that they have to look like the Village at Tom's Creek or anything? You're just saying this is what you hope to achieve?
Yes, ma'am. We use that as an inspiration for the entire design. I know Mr. Hagan is going to be developing this entire property and the plan is the buildout is going to be over 15 years. So he's going to make sure we're of the highest quality all the way through because it is a significant investment.
So other than no more than two unrelated people at one location, there are no other guidelines that can be put in place to limit the number of student housing potential?
I don't think so, ma'am.
And you don't have any proffer to limit? You have your proposed units, but there's, and I don't know if a proffer would be used either, to limit the upper limit, like in that one chart, there's?
Oh, no. We do, that proffer, we do have a maximum number of the different types of units, yes.
Okay, so the maximum column is your proffer?
We've proffered that, yes, ma'am.
But you propose less than that?
Right. Our concept plan and the way that we see it developing is kind of what the proposed units are reflecting.
How many, how many people? If it was fully built out, how many people are estimated to be in that development?
How many people? That is a tough answer to give if I was trying to make an estimate, and that's not the smartest thing in the world to do. But I would say on average, two people per dwelling unit is about as, because you're going to have some of those apartments that are going to be single occupancy. You may have some of the houses that'll be single occupancy, but you certainly may, so maybe 2. something. I think three's too many, but I think two's probably too few. If that's a fair way to answer that, that's the best I can do.
Yeah, that's fair. About the water and sewer, I would imagine that you're putting in something that's pretty substantial, that's tying to the 12-inch that's already there on Price's Fork. So is there an upper limit to the number of units that potentially could feed off of that line that you're putting in there?
So for the water, that 12-inch water line is at the high point. So Price's Fork Road is the highest point to our development. So it's going to have the lowest water line pressure. So all of our line is going downhill from that and we'd see increased pressure. As far as the maximum number of units on that, that'd be a question for the PSA to specifically answer. I don't think there's, I don't think there's any specific limitation as far as pressure or flow, because everything we'd be doing is going smaller line sizes than that. But I don't think that'd be a question for the PSA problem.
And then lastly, you talked about the walking paths, 2.7 miles or whatever you said. Is there a loop or are they, you know?
Yes, so.
And if there is a loop, how far, like what's the distance for the loop?
So in our, in the package that you've got, you can kind of drill down and see the different typical road sections. And some of those show the sidewalks. And one of those, the waiver that Emily mentioned that we asked for, we asked to eliminate the sidewalk on this side of this road right here, because we have very few units over here. And we replaced that, and the reason we requested that was for this trail right here. And that's kind of our spine of our trail. And we have multiple different connections here, you can see here. We have multiple different connections going back and connecting into the sidewalk or the trail. So a loop is probably, but we have multiple points of interconnectivity and you can walk a loop, but it's not around the outside edge.
For the apartment section of the development with a minimum right now at 84 and the max at 108, is there any proposed management or onsite maintenance facilities for the apartments? Or how would that be managed or maintained?
I'd probably defer to Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Hagan on that. Specific question?
Good evening, Mr. Rutledge.
Good evening, everyone. Tom Rutledge, Project Manager with Shaw Development. It would all be, the entire community would be managed by an HOA homeowners association. Mr. Hagan would retain 100% architectural review of anything that is built in there, whether it be apartments, multifamily, single-family, duplexes, that would all be typically in other developments we have until it's 100%.
Would there be any onsite permanent management or maintenance facilities for the community?
For the multifamily part?
Yeah, especially for the multifamily.
Especially for the multifamily. What we've looked at is actually, there's a void. Where's your point? Yeah, you can see right there, there's a void. We didn't know, we wanted to keep the option open for us, whether that area right there could be a clubhouse, maintenance facility, possibly a pool. When you talk to other apartment developers, they say that the 84 or the 108 units doesn't offer enough to offset the cost for those types of facilities. But we're keeping that space open because if you throw in the multifamily that could be a part of it, it could be a great recreational entity. We didn't proffer it because we just don't know at this point.
So then on what we have right now, there's no proffered onsite management or maintenance center facilities?
No. It could be, it could be a property maintenance company of ours that's housed in Christiansburg.
Okay.
It could, and I'm sorry, Ms. Mon.
That's okay.
It could also be a unit in the bottom of one of the things that's converted over to an office. There may be half of one of the lower buildings that's converted over to a clubhouse, to a weight facility or something like that, just off the end.
And the reason that I ask about that is 84 to 108 units isn't a huge apartment community, but you're looking also at townhomes and duplexes, which may eventually become rentals, or they could actually start out as rentals. And so you're getting up there, and I have, my background is in property management. So you're right there at enough apartments, in my opinion, where you're going to have at least one full-time maintenance staff. Generally, the industry average is one full-time maintenance staff per 100 units. So you're getting really close to that. And I worry without consideration of onsite management or maintenance facilities, that your level of service for your apartment residents would be somewhat lower than it would be if there was somebody onsite. People that are unhappy and receiving low levels of service tend to be more disruptive to the surrounding community because there's a little bit more of a lack of respect there. So it's just something that causes me a little bit of pause. Just wanted to mention that.
Well, it's something we definitely want to go through. I do want, not to interrupt, I do want to reiterate that the only rental units that we're proposing right now are the apartments themselves. The townhomes and the duplexes will be constructed with the rated firewall between them, that they will all be conveyed separately.
Oh, okay, okay.
So those are not rentals.
Okay. And through the HOA, I mean, I know that there's various types. So through the HOA, you could actually administer a rental program for your multifamily townhomes and duplexes. And as I said earlier, the idea of student housing is not something that I consider. I worked in student housing for, you know, 20 years almost. I don't think student housing is necessarily a bad thing. And so I think.
I hate to quote John Neal, but he said, he said early in this process, he goes, "There's no public transportation out there. The BT doesn't come out." So basically that, in a nutshell, that really takes care of student housing. He said, "The students that you may have in these apartments are the students you want." And I think somebody else mentioned that, graduate students, families. But I want to go just a step further than that. My vision is also, my parents downsize, I want to be closer to the grandchildren. They're not ready for that next step to an assisted living facility or something like that. It's just another housing opportunity for the people that already live in Montgomery County. Again, I've got four children. My oldest one's getting ready to get married and he's, him and his fiancee are getting ready to relocate to Pulaski, just some kind of cost. And I hate it.
Well, Mr. Neal spoke to a diversity of housing types and that resonates with me. You also spoke to wanting to have people living near the employment center. So that also resonates with me. And then again, I'll just go back to what I mentioned when Ms. Gibson was up there. It's important to me that as we, as we look at this application, we're looking at a true multi-use development. And so the high-end, single-family proffer at 268, knowing that the maximum allowed would be 341, does give me a little bit of concern, just because I'd hate to see the variety of houses change to just apartments and single families. So I just mentioned that so you know kind of where my mind is.
Right. And I think once, and maybe we should have done our homework just a little bit better, I think once also you look at the minimum lot size requirement, the minimum road frontage requirements and stuff like that, it would be hard, if not impossible, to get to that number. Our intentions all along was to allow us to change with the market. Let's say these duplexes were a hit, well, we would lose townhouses or, yeah, townhouses. It'd always be a less density. It would never increase into a higher density. It just allows us some flexibility to move as the market moves. Because like you say, everything we're talking about here is like a 15-year projection and the Village of Tom's Creek was close, but not quite as dense as this, and they're celebrating their 20th year this year.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your information.
Did it bring up any more questions?
Just one more quick question, just for your information. The sewer shed access, is that that little nick down at the bottom, there's two of them that's green, is that where that would go through or is that something else?
Right in here.
But yeah, the green area there.
Yes. I'd have to look at the topography again. It may be over in here, but all easements, the PSA will require that we extend it to the, any sewer drainage area, we would extend that easement to the PSA at the time of the subdivision plant to make sure that those, that whole sewer shed is able. And then we've got to look at, resize the pump station accordingly as well.
I was just curious where it would go.
Mr. Shepherd, answer your question. We've cited the, our sewer pump station is right here.
Right.
And when we work with the PSA and Mr. Frank through this process, if we, if we're fortunate enough to get to the point of designing everything, he has some specific, the PSA has some specific requirements and regulations that make us account for in our planning, not necessarily the final construction for us. Because you can't, also, you can't build a pump station too big because that will create as many problems as building it too small. So we have to kind of plan for expansion or upgrade of the pumps and things like that for the entire sewer shed, which includes a large, all of Sterling Manor and a large portion of property that's down below the page there, as well as some of this property up here, which that's tech property.
Right.
That, all that below the page there, there's a large amount of property there that we kind of have to plan for.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
During the Planning Commission, you mentioned the, the cost for the hookups for the PSA. What was that dollar figure again, if you can recall?
I can recall. It's $1,875,500 in connection fees alone to the PSA. And that's after we construct the pump station, all the lines, all the laterals, water in. So that's the connection fee that will be paid just to get that. You know, this is basically on the low side, on the conservative side. Now, we, I want to make sure we're finished on land use. I feel like along with staff's help, Gaynor Neal's help and my owner's help, this is just exactly what this, this area is asking for. We've taken topography, we've taken view sheds, we've taken housing type, density, pricing. We've done everything we can, PSA, schools, environmental, emergency services, I mean, on and on. I will have to say that I was heartbroken with Emily's recommendation for denial. I understand it from a planning standpoint, but I do want to reiterate that we do meet the minimum, the requirements of VDOT for this entrance in Price's Fork Road. On the conservative numbers, it's a $100 million buildout. Again, depending on the economy, that's 15 years down the road, but even at today's tax rate and using a conservative estimate, that's $750,000 to $900,000 a year annually in real estate taxes alone. So I don't, I don't know how to brag anymore about this project. I think it's just wonderful for the community. I think it's wonderful for the, for the tax base. You've got local developers right here. We're not heading back to Northern Virginia tonight or Atlanta, we're here. They've been here for 40-plus years. Proud to be a part of it and I know that they'll do the right thing. I was really, really, really pleased with Planning Commission's vote as well. I hope I can gain your support also.
Mr. Hagan, do you have anything?
My name's David Hagan. And I will be 61 years old in March 31st. And with the exception of three years of military, I've spent, you know, the balance of my life here, either in business or living in Montgomery County. April, you'd ask a couple of questions about, you know, maintenance, that kind of thing. We have about 800 employees in all of our businesses. Probably 50 of those people are to cover our 2, 3 million square feet we have under roof. So maintenance for something as small as 84 apartments or something like that is no task for us. When we built Cambridge Crossing, it was a 10-year buildout for that plant. It was a, not buy right, but rezoned, it was 380 units. We proffered 150. Our plan showed 121 and we built 121 units. And the plan is, if you look at it 10 years ago through the recession, the plan is identical as it is today, as it is completely built out now. I think we've met all of your needs, far exceeded your village plan for this property. Obviously, it would be no different if we went into Fairlawn and built 490 units there. You get the same traffic without any of the revenue or keeping those people in Montgomery County. I think it's a great plan. I think that Tom, Gaynor Neal, have worked with staff for over a year, year and a half working on this plan. Obviously, the roads are the only issue. Obviously, a few of the folks at Sterling Manor, I don't expect them to be happy. I'm sure the people on Stafford Drive were not happy when Sterling Manor was built. So, but the growth is coming. Whether we're ready for it or not, it's coming and we'll have to be ready for it. You know, I've been in business in Montgomery County for a long, long, long time. I certainly want to support this community any way we can. We do a tremendous amount. We started a program at the peak of the recession, the Growing the Future Program for our local schools, which has generated about somewhere between $6 to $8 million for our local schools in that period of time while our economy was getting back on its feet. of time while our economy was getting back on its feet. Yeah, we very much are, give back our communities, because everything we have received has come from this community. And I think the growth is coming. This is where you want the growth. And certainly, they keep on talking about 15-year bills out, bill out, and I'm 61, so they don't need to plan a lot more projects for me, because sooner or later, you finally will get tired. I do appreciate the fact that you guys were receptive to hear this, listen to some of our calls and our concerns. We've already got sizable investment in this project. That's one of the reasons that we are the developer that was able to do this, because we took the risk. You know, this property was under contract three or four different times, but nobody would take the risk that they were going to go through the rezoning in two or three years to be able to acquire this property and to be able to get to this point. So again, I, I don't think, I will tell you this, I don't think I've ever been more impressed with a group of people within the planning commission. They absolutely tore this thing to pieces and debated it, and went back and forth and back and forth, and then come up with a non-zero vote. It's a great project. We're looking forward to it, and I appreciate your support on it. Okay. Thanks. You got any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I will say this. Oh, one of the things, I was just at a meeting that they had with the ex-governor, Senator Warner, and he was talking about across the state that they were having problems with old schools not being developed. And I kind of shook my head, and I said, well, I guess we're, you know, we bought three old schools from the county. You know, the Bethel School, which obviously is voted on Park, and the Hotel that's being built out there now, that hopefully will generate about $100,000 a year to the county. And then, of course, Elston, we're in the midst of that development now. Then we have this other little school, Governor Blacksburg. And hopefully, we're headed in a good direction there that I think will be, I hope, is good for the county and Blacksburg and us as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, no one signed up to speak on the Walnut Springs subdivision. If anybody in the audience would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You have five minutes. See anybody come, this public address be closed. We're going to take about, about 10 minutes break, and then we'll be right back.
Back at 8:58.
We'll move on to the public address session. No one has signed up, but if anybody would like to come forward and speak about anything, please step forward, state your name, address. You have five minutes. See anybody come forward, we'll close the public address session. Moving on to the addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir.
No addendum. Item of consentable. Is there a motion?
Motion or second.
Everybody's jumping the gun tonight. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, will you call roll, please?
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Baugh?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
Is there a motion to go into the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Baugh?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
In work session.
Chair Planning Gibson, Planning Gibson, Planning Director. Getting late. Emily is going to walk us through this work session item regarding the Tejas private road request.
So this is a pretty unique item. We entered it into work session. A hearing isn't required, and it does have a little bit of history. I'll touch on that. But basically, I'll provide you a quick overview this evening. I have some pictures and some items that staff's reviewed, and that will pretty much be, and answer any questions that I can. We don't have a resolution on tonight's agenda, just to give you guys time to process it and take it up for action at a future meeting. So this project is actually, takes advantage of a section in our ordinance that allows for private roads that are not built to the VDOT standard, only when approved by the board. And back in 2008, a request came forward. It was subsequently slightly amended, but that request, which was included in your packet, was to build a subdivision with these roads that don't meet VDOT standards and don't, wouldn't be privately or publicly maintained at those standards. Since that time, a plat, has been reported that made 10 lots. And back in 2012, using the same conditions that were put on the project originally, additional acreage was added, and those conditions were kept. So that's very consistent with what we're talking about tonight, keeping all the conditions in place and just adding additional acreage that's been acquired by the property owner. This map was included in your packet, and it has a couple of different colors, so I'll break those down for you. Ultimately, the applicant owns everything that's in the bright yellow color, including this. This area in the middle represents those 10 lots that were, that have been subdivided off. And of those, one has a home, it's been sold, and a home's been constructed on it. This, it, this is sort of there, right at the exit 128. And this is Reese Mountain Road. Let's see. This is Reese Mountain Road here in red. So that's how you access this property, just to orient you. And this bright blue line is the MVP pipeline. So the current request is to add the 225.2 acres that was acquired by the owner in 2014 to the total acreage that's under these same conditions that the board has placed on it. And all those conditions, and a full list of those were included in your packet. Staff reviewed each of those to ensure that they were met or in the process of being met based on timing, and they have been met so far. So the road condition, the construction of the helipad, road maintenance agreement that's in place, and the deed restriction and HOA docs that were required. Staff was able to find all those items. When you go up Reese Mountain Road, you will come to a place that looks like this. This sort of is where the applicant's property begins. This gate is not actually locked, because otherwise, this would be the end of my pictures, but I have some more. I just walked up to it, and there was a, there was a chain there. It is not supposed to be locked during the pipeline construction. I think at times there were, but there's some sort of agreement there. And honestly, staff did not analyze that, because like I said, I went up to it and was able to access the site. So you can get a sense from these pictures, though, of the topography that's at the site, and also the current road bed conditions. The road has actually got a significant amount of gravel. It was very dry that day, I do have to say. One of those one dry days we've had in the last year. But there are this stuff that you see along the interior, this is an ENS measure, and this is along the majority of the road up until a certain point, and I'll show you that. But you can see here, just based, this is the geologic conditions there at the site. This sort of winds up where that hairpin turn is. So if, if this is where I was standing, looking where I had just come from, so this is coming down from the interstate there, and then this does actually, this is literally the sharp turns around and goes up into the subdivision further. And dividing these two up, which was sort of unintentional, but it came together on the slide, you can see that sharp turn there. This is actually part of the MVP pipeline construction, that blue line on Lot 10. But this shows you how Reese Mountain Road goes just below that. So that's some site conditions there. Again, you can see that the road has a significant amount of gravel, is in good shape, and was easily passable, and stayed that way for some time. You can see this part of the road has ENS measures on both sides. There's a point where the MVP line crosses the road, and that's the point where I'm standing to take these pictures. So I'm in the road looking north. You can see this area, which has the matting and everything on it. And when I'm looking south, this is, this is going straight, straight down there. This is road furniture, just to give you a, kind of a sense of where I'm standing there on Reese Mountain Road. As you come to the end after the crossing, you can see that the ENS measures end there, and the width and the gravel change, this is where that area changes up. This road condition, again, it was dry that day, was passable by our Explorer, just a two-wheel drive. And that, that's basically the road condition that took you all the way through the end of the property by HS Tejas. So road condition was one of the main items, because again, as I mentioned earlier, road standards not being met as our normal subdivisions was the trigger for this coming before the board in, in 2008 to begin with. So based on our review, and based on what staff looked at, the planning commission did recommend adding the acreage to the property with those same conditions, which was the request of the property owner. They have not asked for any increase in density. The original approval was for 45 lots. As I mentioned, only 10 have been created. And so there's actually a decrease in density by adding the, the additional acreage there on the site. I'll take any questions that you have, that I can try to answer. Marty also has been a big help as we put this together and piece together the project's history.
Can you show that one map of, at the beginning with a different, yeah. And so the gate station is down by 460, I'm sorry, it's up across the street from, across 81 and close to, go ahead. Where is it? Do you know, relative to this?
The gate? The gate station?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do not know. You, you mean for MVP?
Roanoke Cass, yeah, 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 that we approved.
It would be down here?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it would be down here.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
I know, it was a quiz.
I had the word gate in my head, and you said gate station, you lost me, sorry.
Any more questions? Where's that gate at on that?
The actual gate. The actual gate is more kind of right in here. So you come past the first couple houses.
So it's just at the end of that yellow?
Yeah, it's, it's somewhere right in this part of the road. I'm trying to remember. Wimmer Property's on this side, but I felt, I feel like it's right in here.
Any more questions? Has Elston Fire been contacted, asked them to go up there and look? I'm kind of concerned.
It's my understanding that when this was originally looked at in 2008, that an actual fire truck went on the road, all the way up to Roanoke County, turned around and came back, because Puck Wells was on the commission at the time. At that time, the road was not nearly in the condition that it is today. And I guess that was part of, of the conversation. At that time, also, part of the reason that the helipad construction was required was based on an increase, because I did travel the whole road, but it took a significant amount of time. If I were having an emergency at the end of it, I, I would hope I wasn't having an emergency at the end of it. But the helipad is actually in Roanoke County, but has been constructed and was looked at by lifeguarding for inspection.
Well, that's part of my concern, because you know, somebody having a stroke, first golden hour, the first hour.
And when staff evaluated, we looked at the conditions that the board originally put on it to make sure they have been met, and so that the intent of what was put in place at that time was, was still in good standing, which it is. And as I mentioned, this is, this is adding this portion here, but not asking for any increase in lots from what the board originally approved. So that was staff's perspective and the commission's perspective is, the project itself has been in place in some form for over 10 years, and this adds, you know, some additional acres, but no chance for additional lots.
Yeah. That's just my concern, you're moving back in the lot. I mean, you're moving back further.
To add this portion, and this, I don't know if you can make that up, but this is Reese Mountain Road here in the red. This is where I was showing you looking north and looking south for men in the road. And then right around in here is where the road condition changed from the wider to the more narrow road.
Thank you.
You're okay?
I could just, I remember when this came up, and Marty and Carol do, there was a great, great, great deal of discussion about fire and rescue, to the point where I said, well, when you sell one of these lots to somebody, are they going to know that they're not going to be able to access quickly, fire, rescue, you know? You know how people go in blindly and buy something, and they're like, oh, I didn't know that. But...
There is a disclosure item, and that was included in your packet, that speaks to that specifically.
We asked that to be included.
That was included, yes.
Yes. If that helps any, because we were all the same way, like, why would you want to do that?
But you know, first thing's going to happen, somebody has a heart attack or a stroke, they're going to be blaming first responders because he couldn't get there.
You sign your life away when you buy one.
I don't know.
Any more questions? Thank you.
It's crazy.
Is there a motion about a work session?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Baugh?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
At a work session. New business.
Mr. Chair, we have one item of new business, and this is, is a result of discussion earlier this evening about amending the D2 precinct polling place address. Bring that before you for your consideration.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Baugh?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
Can I propose something?
Just may.
So sometimes when we have no feedback or public address or public comment on a new development, we vote for it, or, you know, have a vote that same night. Is this something, is this Shaw development something that we can do like that?
One of the things I've asked Emily, and there was a general consensus that we would not be voting on it tonight, and I think some citizens may have believed we are not going to vote on it tonight, because there were some folks that were talking, and I think I spoke to at least one citizen, say typically, if anybody speaks out against it, then we would not be voting on it that evening. And it's, so it was my impression that the applicants are expecting us to vote first meeting in March.
You know, we don't have an ordinance prepared for the board's consideration, either because, generally, if there's opposition at all, even at the planning commission level, we generally wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
County attorney's report.
I've got no report other than that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, man. County administrator.
Mr. Chair, just want to point out that beginning next week, we start our every Monday meetings for a while, next Monday at 6 o'clock. In the board chambers here, I will be presenting the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget, assuming that we get it finished this week, right, Carol?
That's right.
That's right.
We're working diligently on that. I think we'll be ready for you next Monday at 6 o'clock. The following Monday, the 11th, is a regular board meeting. We do have on the calendar for a special work session on Monday, March 18th. If the board is able to come to a consensus on a tax rate, an advertised tax rate and budget on the 11th, we won't need the meeting on the 18th. However, I'm leaving that meeting on the calendar to, you know, hope for the best and prepare for the rest, as I always say. We also have a joint meeting with the school board on Tuesday, March 19th. And I'm sure the topics of discussion at that meeting will be the budget that's just been presented, and also a discussion of infrastructure projects in the Christiansburg strand. Then we have our regular board meeting, you can get on March 25th. But next Monday night, 6 o'clock here in the board chambers, and I'll have you out in plenty of time for the PSA meetings at.
Y'all.
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Yes, sir. Glad you're here, thank you. Supervisor B.
I wanted to thank the staff for organizing our extended work session on Friday and Saturday. I thought it was really beneficial. And I wanted to, and, and somebody else will probably talk about this too, but the drug court graduation on Friday was just really, really moving to see our first three individuals graduate. And it's been a long time coming. It was very well done, and the emotions were running really high that day from the three graduates, and also from Judge Long and from Judge Turk and the New River Committee Services Board, all of us that were there. It was really, really moving. Next, before I came over here, I went to Delegate Hurst, had a town hall meeting in Blacksburg, and he was updating citizens on what had been occurring during the journal assembly session, which reminded me, because we got the, the note from, the letter from Delegate Rush, do we want to have them come back sometime and give us like a report like they used to do, or, you know, like sort of update us on anything that's local? You know, that might be helpful. I wanted to thank the economic development staff for this great annual report they put out. And what was interesting to me is to see how our staff has spread, you know, just not their normal work, but trying to deal with the Economic Development Authority and the Regional Economic Development Commission and the MBC Development Corporation. They really do a lot for us. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is at the last airport authority meeting on February 12th, a discussion arose about the funds that we all give to the airport. Each entity gives $50,000 a year, and that's been going on since 2002. And basically, what it was supposed to be was a discussion about, you know, are there any other, you know, needs coming up at the airport that we need to think about funding? Because, you know, they're expanding the runway, we're hoping to sell more fuel, and eventually lessen what the localities are putting in. Well, evidently, during that discussion, Mr. Stipes from Christiansburg, I guess, took it to mean that he needed to go back and ask Christiansburg for a $10,000 increase. It was supposed to go from 50 to 60, but I think that basically it was still supposed to be discussed, so I didn't want you all to be caught, like, if, you know, someone from the town of Blacksburg or town of Christiansburg came and said, well, what are y'all going to do about that? You know, I thought, I better bring that up, because we fully expect to keep continuing to discuss this. And so if you hear anything, that's basically how it came about. And last but not least, there's someone I just want to remember tonight, and that is Supervisor John Jenkins. He was a supervisor on the Prince William County Board of Supervisors for 37 years, the longest serving member. He passed away recently, and he's also a past VAco president. So I just want to remember his service to his community and to his state, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor B.
I also want to thank the staff and Kevin Byrd for helping us with our extended work session. I think it all went very well. And then I'd like to add this to a brief discussion next Monday at the PSA. This is a, one of my constituents told me about how federal mogul has been, dumping is a strong word, so I'm not going to, I don't want to use that word, but some of their treated water goes into our local streams, and they have a public comment period that ends March 11th. And there's a lot of legalese that this constituent sent me, and I talked to Marty before the meeting to say, hey, could you review this, send out some comments, and see if we want to, as a board, submit a letter to DEQ. So again, the public comment period ends March 11th, so if we can just take a couple minutes on Monday to talk about this, I'd like to do that, so that if we want to write a letter, we can by March 11th, and that's all.
Do that at PSA?
Right.
Okay.
But during, like, maybe a couple minutes after Craig is...
What we can do is, for the business of the 6 o'clock meeting, we can have a presentation of the fiscal year 2020 budget, and then on the agenda, we always have other business and adjournment, you can bring it up under other business.
I would, before I would feel comfortable in voting for it, I don't know if we're going to have an engineer look at it and say, because the other thing is...
I agree.
It, it's in the town of Blacksburg, federal mogul's in the town of Blacksburg, and, and then the other thing is, my question is, are, I mean, maybe we can comment, maybe that's perfectly acceptable.
I don't know enough now.
Right.
And so I just want to...
I will forward this to everyone. I look, I look to Marty to, yeah, to give us some guidance. And the only reason why I bring it up is because this stream, you know, that part of Blacksburg is very close to the county line, and, you know, if we can help the process, you know, I'd like to at least try.
Do we know if the town has commented on it?
I have no idea.
Or taken a position on it?
I'll, I'll try to find out.
That would help me.
Sure.
If the town has taken a position, then maybe we could review and see what their engineers have done, and then make that decision.
Sounds good.
That would help me.
I'll give that the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
No report, I just wanted to say that I am officially going to run for reelection in November for this seat in District E. Thank you.
Good job. Supervisor Tuck.
I have a little PowerPoint presentation. They're going to try to give me a clicker up here, which is dangerous. But one of the things, we brought up constitutional officers, and I had mentioned the resolution that we had passed, and I realized that at least two of the supervisors weren't on the board at that point in time. And I looked at the resolution that we passed after we went through a very difficult, controversial period of time. We worked together to a 7-0 resolution, and let's see if I can make it work. So history and by resolution, the county compensation supplement elected clerk of the court was eliminated. And then, but we didn't stop there. There were some discussions amongst all the board members, and Mary encouraged us to meet with the constitutional officers, and we invited all of them to come to dinner to talk about a resolution in regards to the county compensation. After that meeting, the constitutional officers were in agreement. And at that point in time, if you look, the commissioner of revenue was receiving about $9,300, the treasurer was $1,700, clerk of the court was $21,000, and Sheriff Barton had just been elected, so he had not received any. And the Commonwealth's Attorney was receiving $53.65. And then the next slide is current. Well, the commissioner of revenue, she has continued her educational process, so now she is graduated at that point.
Master Commissioner.
Yes, she is a master commissioner now. And that is, again, from the comp board, and that's the comp board saying she ought to be paid at this level. Treasurer Helen now has taken over the helm, and so she is not getting a supplement. The clerk of the court is not getting a supplement either, but she has furthered her education as well. The sheriff is still not getting a supplement. Out of all the constitutional officers, the only ones who can't get additional training to get additional salary is the Commonwealth's Attorney's office. So there's no master Commonwealth's Attorney or anything along those lines. When the population numbers hit that 100,000 mark, the commissioner of revenue salaries will be an increase to 115, the treasurer at 105, the clerk of the court, and that is going to be her master level. And I will also say that that is not currently funded right now, the master level for the clerks of the court by, at least in the previous budget. It could be, and I haven't had a chance to look at this year's budget, but it wasn't funded at that point in time. So she'll be making an additional $24,000, the sheriff will be making another $12,000, and the Commonwealth's Attorney will be making an additional $2,371. So this would, by the time we're at the end of this, there won't be any more of the compensation for the top elected officials. And I want to make sure that we're clear, because sometimes when you start talking about supplements, we do provide supplements for sheriff's deputies, to other offices, and when you look at the history of that, why did that happen? We had county employees that were making more than state employees, and they were doing the exact same job in the exact same office. And so there was an agreement to put everybody on the same page. Also, we were not able to retain deputies. We were competing against Virginia Tech, town of Christiansburg, town of Blacksburg, and we were training the deputies, paying for that training, and then they were leaving because they could make more pay elsewhere. By providing these supplements, we're keeping everybody on the same, and when it's discussed, we're not talking about the employees, we're only talking about the constitutional officers. And I'm not saying I've been here a long time, but one of the things during the next few months before I'm off the board is try to point out some of the things of, why did we do this? Here's this resolution, and I thought that this evening would be a good, there wasn't too much on the agenda, and there was a lot, I thought, on the last one, and I wanted to get the information about the clerk of the court and make sure I was accurate as well. So I hope that helps, and that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor B.
I too thought the work session, extended work session we had was very beneficial. It seemed to move a lot quicker on Saturday for some reason.
Hey.
I don't know why. And also, the drug court, it was very rewarding to see the three graduates, and I'm hoping that, that, that takes off even more, because the money it saves the taxpayers for not having to incarcerate these folks is, is measurable. But not only that, as Mary had mentioned, to see the change in their lives was, was, was pretty good. Their recidivism, did I say that right?
Rate.
Is very low, and that's, that should be encouraging to all of us, because I'm sure a lot of folks, not just myself, who was in law enforcement, we tend to look at a lot of programs as a waste of time and money, because so many people go right back to doing what they were doing that got them there in the first place. But the drug court seems to be making a big difference, so that was really a great thing, and look forward to more. That's mine.
Vice Chair Demoss.
Just a couple of things, and I, I will go ahead and address it, I guess, since Supervisor Fuchekowski made me have to. I have been sick with the flu. It's really going around in the New River Valley. And so after our Friday night extended work session, I actually went to, urgent care, and was diagnosed with the flu, and decided to keep myself in a little germ bubble and try to protect my colleagues.
And we appreciate that.
So that is why I was not present on the Saturday extended work session, and also why it took less time than it would have been had I been there. Steve. But I did want to report on a couple of other items from last week. Last Thursday, there was the State of the Young Child presentation. I did attend. There were several speakers, Megan Fliederer, and I probably just killed her last name, Fliederer, with Smart Beginnings, Katie Thompson from Family Preservation Services, Bethany Mottz with ABC, and Sarah Hanks with the Blacksburg Children Museum all spoke. They presented some relevant and very timely information about early childhood education and the impact that it has on the child's life as they continue through all levels of education. So just a couple of statistics that I wanted to share with you guys. There are around 10,000 children ages zero to five in the New River Valley, the New River Valley composing Floyd Giles, you know, whole area, not just Montgomery County. Out of those 10,000, we are at a childcare deficit of around 7,000, meaning we do not have spots in daycare facilities for 70% of the children that live in the New River Valley. That was something that was a problem when my now 15-year-old was an infant. I know we have a lot of fine people that are working to solve that problem, but it is certainly by no means solved. So it's something we need to be vigilant about. And then also, I've heard this routinely quoted as a statistic for determining future incarceration of children, is whether or not they're reading on grade level by the end of the third grade. And so in Montgomery County specifically, 26% of students are not yet reading on grade level in, at the end of third grade. So that is something that we need to be very concerned with as a community. We want to be sending our children on the trajectory towards fruitful life and not towards prison. So just as, as we're hearing discussions, I'm sure in the coming months, those are some things I wanted everybody to keep in mind, some areas that we need to be particularly sensitive to. And then I wanted to just also say, on the subject of drug court graduation, and I actually posted this on my Facebook, and I want to reiterate it, I am so happy to live in a community where people believe that, that we should be helping people rather than incarcerating people. Drug court and the graduation ceremony was impressive, one, for the incredible amount of work that the three graduates have put into it, but two, for the heart and soul that the people that are working on making sure that program exists, for the amount of work that they're putting into it, because it's about saving lives instead of sending people into the prison pipeline. It was very, very moving. It was an honor to be included in the graduation ceremony, and I left taking away quite a bit of love for the people that live in this community and make it great. And then finally, just mark your calendars, Brooming and Blooming is coming, that will be on Saturday, April 27th. So go ahead and jot it down as a activity to do on that day, and plenty more information will be coming from the county to follow. And that's it. I should go first?
Mr. Chair, may I add something to Supervisor Demoss?
Just may.
With the young child and daycare and all of that that we've talked about in the past, I think, you know, it already is a problem, and we've talked about the growth at Virginia Tech and the people that will be coming in here, so this is going to be a continuing problem that we might need to look at more seriously in the future. Thank you for bringing it up.
I just have a couple of things. I want to thank the county staff for working on the budget, and I know it's not over yet. Thank you. I would ask my colleagues if they, I know if you need something, you need to ask the staff, but if we give them a little break this week so they can get everything together for the budget, would be extra good.
Thank you.
And I want to thank AEP for all the work they've been doing. I think before I left the house, they said there was only 500 people without lights in Montgomery County now. That's good. And I want to thank the sheriff's department and all law enforcement for what they've done. I was listening, shared with them, and they had run around everywhere and all that wind and bad weather. Thank you all very much. That's all. Meeting adjourned.